I'd like to call our board's session. And make sure that if there is anybody on the, we're not taking public input today. We'll get started here.
Yeah, we'll go so introduce, so we've got a guest with us here today. This is Matt Ellsworth with the Association of Washington Public Municipal Districts. And Matt came and talked with us a little bit prior to the levy last year, if you'll remember. And he gave some helpful information. Freda and James and I have been talking about redistricting and I had a conversation with Matt. And he's obviously kind of fielding a lot of these questions from other public hospital districts. And I thought it'd be a good idea to have him come in and kind of leave a discussion on redistricting, what options are. So turn the time over to Matt.
Great, thank you. So again, nice to see many of you again. Last time I saw you, we were doing some work to prepare the group and your governance roles for your levy. And so now, taking, as he mentioned, invited me back to, I know you're considering your decision around redistricting. And so I thought what I would do is share with you a little bit about what that, what that means for you. I'm going to share with you a little bit about the electoral ramifications of that. Again, as I mentioned, I know we have a new commissioner here too, but as I mentioned to you last time, my background is largely in campaigns and elections. So I have some, and I've been on a redistricting panel for another state before. So I understand the technical aspect of this a little bit. And then I want to visit with you about how you make your decisions and then how that's made as you're considering this. We have, I would say roughly a third of our PhDs are structured like you are. And what that means is that they have the sub-districts, we call them. So, so what does that mean? So you may be in the sub-district that encompasses Oak Harbor. However, everybody within the PhD votes for you. And you as a commissioner, you represent everybody in the district, not just the ones that are in the ones you live in. So I think that's a very important thing to understand is you're voted at large. And then you also represent that, that part. The only difference of the sub-districts are you live in that little slice of, little slice of heaven, that's your place. Most PhDs have a mix. They have two at-large, again, voted on by everybody, represent everybody, and three sub-districts. Sub-districts, you live in that slice, still voted on by everybody, you still represent everybody. So every 10 years, you are required to redistrict because you do have those subs. And here you have five of them. And Jake's gonna raise his hand and correct me if I say anything incorrect. You're careful. And I don't want to drive past my headlights here, this is probably the extent of my understanding of your community. So every 10 years, you have, you have to do what's called redistricting and you have to do it because your population changed. And every district has to be equal. You're allowed a small percentage leeway in between. But let's say the south end of the island had a large increase in population, that's now uneven. You may represent more people than you, and that, and that's not equal to the voters. It's equal to the voters and they all vote at large, but that's not equal representation. And so that, so that's why you have to do this. And you are required to do it. Normally, it would have been required to be done by November of last year. The legislature did pass a bill to allow this to be leapfrogged one year forward. I'm encouraging everybody to make their decision on what to do very quickly. Because you're affecting, quite frankly, some of you that may be up for election. So now let's talk about if you just, your fork in the road, what's your choice? You have three choices before you. One choice is to keep the five and go forth with your redistricting. And I'm going to talk a minute about how you do that. Your other choice is to eliminate the sub-districts and everybody is at-large. If you did that, you'd be behaving like most PhDs around the state behave. And then finally, you can change. You can change to go to that three-two model. However, you would have to go to your voters and they would have to approve those new lines. The voters do not have to approve the new lines if you redistrict and keep five. So, so how do you redistrict? It can be a very complicated process. You're one of those PhDs that, I said about a third of them have the subs. Most of them are county-wide PhDs. And so when the three county commissioners redistrict, they just cut the pace and they let the county do the work. You don't have that luxury here because your PhD is not matching county lines. So then what you have to do is you pull up your census blocks. I don't know your census block numbers here, it's in the tens and thousands. And you start drawing lines on a map and you start moving places back and forth. And so you can hire a consultant to do that. Depending on the level of work, that's going to cost you the way from, from five to $25,000 to do that. There's a legal risk I'll expose you to as well. There is well-known individuals in state of Washington that I know they've already come to this PhD and tried to hook you up on a public disclosure issue. This one individual's had over 250 lawsuits in the past two years and his average sum is $55,000. He's just a black-hearted individual, put that in minutes, undermine him. They're watching, is what I'm saying. So if you choose to redistrict, I want to make sure you do it right. Because what could seem like a simple, a simple decision can have consequences. So that's how you redistrict. You get, you pull those census blocks, you start moving them around. All, all, let's, let's assume you stay with five, all five have to be equal in population. Because you're a special purpose district, you are not subject to the Voting Rights Act. Which means you don't have to have any other issues of equity within your districts. A congressional district has to have equity among communities, among native populations, among racial equities. You don't have to do that, you're exempt from that portion of redistricting. If you make the other choice to abolish your districts, it's very simple. You pass a resolution amongst yourselves. All of you now have your district one, two, three, four, five. The numbers go away and everything remains the same. The, the difference is in the next election, you don't have to live in that slice. So it, and the voters don't have to approve it. They literally go through, your election cycles. So if you're in, you're in year two out of six, you're going to remain in year two out of six. That doesn't change either, that remains. And then you, you go forth and behave like that. You will continue to be elected at large and you will continue to be representing your community at large. Finally, let me visit with you a little bit about some of the politics behind that decision. The reasons I hear, why shouldn't we abolish them versus the communities that do? Right now, people do sub-districts because they have a belief that it will make sure that you have a commissioner from every community. Well, the reality is, you live in Coopville, people from Oak Harbor still voted for you as a commissioner, right? You still got that votes. As a campaign professional, that's what a campaign's about. But what we have found is when you abolish those districts, the fear of, well, we're just going to have five commissioners all from the biggest city in our PhD. The data has shown that is not true. That doesn't continue, that does not happen. If it were to happen, it would actually take all of you going through the annual six-year terms to get there. Even after that, that equal representation, we'll call it, tends to still exist. Because you are all highly elected officials and you'll go wearing men and women of certificate of election. You, you know that you're good public servants and your case to be a good public servant means just as much in your own community as it does someone else. So that, that, I wanted to spell the myth that those districts are preserving that community representation. That tends not, not to stay status quo. For issues of, you have a good commissioner who decides to move and they move out of their district. They can no longer serve. We see other districts say, okay, here's what we're going to do. We're going to shift you to the at-large and we're going to shift you to the, the sub-district. Personally, I don't think that's good for democracy and I think that's what everybody hates about elected officials. But we find candidate recruitment goes up when you get rid of the sub-districts. And then these issues of good public servants being stuck in that district also go away. The number one issue that I see actually is candidate recruitment. And be able to find candidates that we struggle in one district but not others. So that, that's my quick little overview of redistricting. I know that was quick, I wanted to have some time for discussion to share with you what's happening amongst other PhDs. You're not the only one faced with this choice. I know of three other PhDs right now, their commissioners are voting within the next month, whether to abolish or keep. Some have already started down that path of doing redistricting themselves. We have some that started down that path and said, whoa, and decided not to do it. We do not have any districts, to my knowledge, that are looking to create them. In other words, going to the voters and say, create. I will, the last thing I'll say is if you choose to abolish your sub-districts and go to at-large, you can return. But you have to go to your, your voters and ask. So this is not a forever one-and-done decision. And it's every 10 years. Now, in two years, you realize it's not a good fit for you and your community reacts in a way that says, we want these back. You don't have to wait till that 10-year census to do it. You can, you can change and bring them back at any time. You can also abolish them at any time. However, I would say if you're going to invest yourselves in the time, effort and money and work to redistrict, do it now when it's required. And, and you can't put it off, so. I hope that was helpful. I'd like to offer any discussion or thoughts that they have, sir.
So we talked before about if we currently have one commissioner from north would be one from central, one from the south, and then two at-large. To do that, I mean, do we have to split the island up, its population about third, 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 and then the two at-large?
That, that is correct. If you decide to go to two sub-districts, or sorry, three, the three sub-districts have to be redistricted. They have to be even and drawn equitably on population. You have to go to your voters and say, and by the way, when you go to your voters and create the sub-districts, you as commissioners have to run of those three districts. And so you can do it, and but yes, they would, and you can, you can pick the communities how you want, they just have to be equal in population. And your voters have to approve it.
I think the one thing you haven't addressed is that when you have commissioners that are representative of each area, even though everyone votes for them, the, the people living in those communities feel as though they have a voice through their commissioner. So rather than having, you know, everybody at-large, you know, it's like, who are they going to talk to?
Right.
That they know, that they know who they can talk to and have expectations. But because it's their elected official, that, that, that is sort of their person.
Right. I agree with you. And I go back to the, the data that has shown me that when you get rid of the sub-districts, those communities still have a commissioner. They, because they already trust them and you're already elected at-large. And the reality that you live in that community isn't what's getting you elected at-large. You can still do a good job of being that person. And for you to be a commissioner from one community and you come to run next time, even though you don't have a residency requirement, you can still go out and motivate that community to make sure that you're reelected. And so you're still going to live there and you're still going to represent the entire district as a whole. But the reality is removing those lines doesn't affect your opportunity or chance at reelection.
No, as, as a citizen.
Right.
I, I would know who I would talk to.
Right, and, and as a citizen, your commissioner may still live down the street, you still know that. These, these are quite frankly, lines on a map that most voters don't understand. They understand that you live down the street and they understand I talked to you because I know you. And I elect you because I know you and I trust you. Those things are still going to remain in place. The difference is that those lines won't. What we have found in PhD races is that most folks don't know they're in a PhD, let alone what the lines are for that district. When you run, it may say district two, but I would be hard-pressed to, to find many citizens that understand what that means. So yeah, you could, you should preserve. Hey, I, I love, just like when Mr. Kilmer runs for election for Congress, he's not just elected in the town he lives in, he goes to every other town, but his hometown still votes for him too.
So, so one, to go off of that, though, because I hear, even, even, you know, lines aside, people just want to know, who do I vote to? If the commission were to say abolish districts, there would be nothing preventing them to more or less select within themselves to say, just as point of reference for the community, to say, for the city of Langley or whoever, if you have issues, contact Freda. If you live in Oak Harbor and have issues, contact Ron or these people. So, so you could kind of, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but you could just de facto, here's your contact point for this area, even though there's not lines on a map per se, just for public.
So certainly good if you choose to operate as a board like that without the restriction that comes with those lines.
Without restrictions that comes with lines.
I, I think one of the hardest things to spell is that you don't represent just the community that your lines are around. You represent the entire PhD. And, and even though they may know you because you're their neighbor, those citizens from anywhere in the, in the PhD can call and ask you for help. And you take public input from everybody, you don't take public input just from neighbors.
I guess I would say that, you know, our island is so unique, of course you consider ourselves unique, that, you know, the issues that come up at the south end, and we've recently had some restructuring down there. If those individuals were to contact Ron who was up in Oak Harbor, he may not be aware of the nuances of the importance of, of that consolidation and how to, how to talk to the community about its relevance.
Right.
Just because he's up there.
Right.
And, and I think that would speak to sort of preserving at least the, the districts the way they are because of the uniqueness, I think, of our island.
I, I don't disagree with you. However, if you're from a community that is underrepresented, put your name on the ballot and go out and run at-large, just like everybody else does, and go to represent your community. And that's quite fun, what a lot of you have done. And, and when the districts are abolished, those unique areas still preserve those unique. Another, what I'm telling you is that because their population equal, you've drawn lines around communities, quite frankly, or these parts of the island. When the populations are, are equal, and you may split Oak Harbor between two districts when you start looking at, at the map. And so when, when, when you, those population centers are vote centers. And it is a natural outcome of elections that those population centers, those four areas or three areas of the island, are naturally going to have a higher voter input and more likely to have people from their community get elected. Even though it is, and, and the difference, because they are equal population. And so it still prevents, so, so I still believe that you still have a voting power of a, of a whole community. And the turnout is so low in PhD commissioner races, we don't see wide swings between communities when the, when the lines are gone.
One other question, basically, we have five, five spots.
Yes, sir.
You know, if we say, okay, we're going to abolish it, they're going to be all at-large. But can we say, okay, you're at-large, but you run for this slot, basically as a board, we're going to assign these south would be, and this one will be central would be, this would be north would be.
No, no, you cannot. That would be creating a sub-district that you'd have to ask the voters. And, and as you want to.
Try to circumvent that part of that.
Well, you could, you could, you could, I mean, you could stay, like, you're not representative of this district. But again, back to that, if you live in the south end, you can contact any of us, but you know, your point of contact might be Freda or your point of contact.
Right, you can internally, once you're elected and sitting in this room, you can say, hey, you're, you're from, you're from the south part of the island, we want you to be the liaison to that point.
No, I want it to be in the upper pamphlet type thing, you know.
No, no, you cannot.
David, no.
No, you cannot. They, they would just be listed by their district number. If, if you are district two, you will always, that two just goes away. So, no, and, and you can't create the three without going to the voters and asking them to create the three.
So really, the main reason for doing away with the districts is that it would give more people the opportunity to run.
That's correct.
In a, in a specific area, that it might be difficult to get somebody like from the south end. Whereas in Oak Harbor, you've got the three and you've got more population, like you're not going to.
That's correct. We see more people have the opportunity to run, which I feel is great representation. You save yourself this battle every 10 years. And, and you save yourself the, the work to do it. I would also say that if you're going to go through the work to do the five, and at the end of the day, you want the three, do the three and put the three on the ballot. Because if you're going to invest the kind of money and, and legal advice it takes to redistrict the five, might as well go, go all in and do it and end up where you want to end up.
The problem we have is that we have three commissioners from the north. One from central, one from south, that will top.
Right.
It's not the, it's stacked, it's the fact that you're trying to get people to run on Northwood. You've got three slots.
And, and, and your districts are standing in your way.
And it's like, you take a look at the map and it's like, well, we got a few that run. You can get three people to run this one near Oak Harbor, but the other people on the other side of the midline can't get anybody.
Right, and that is a very, very common challenge for PhDs. Having the sub-district exacerbates that. Even when you're at-large for all of them, that challenge still exists for recruiting candidates. You just have a, a much greater opportunity to find people to do that.
My two cents is that we probably get better showing, we'll find south would be central. You might have two commissioners in Southwood.
Why?
What?
Why?
Well, I'm just saying that if, if all five were just all like large.
Well, you, you. Except you've got the biggest population up north. I mean, the only thing that we have down south is we have retirees. So they can come to meetings in the middle of the day.
We might get more involvement from the south. It's like a positive thing.
Well, well, right, but again, this is what elections are about together. Is you get more candidates, you get more access and your communities elect the right people. And, and you can't go into this trying to stack an election because you want it to look a certain way for certain people. And, and even though you want, and we all want representation of the entire island. And, and what I'm saying is that when you get rid of the sub-districts, that, that, you're not going to see that actually change from what you are right now. And what you're suggesting is, oh, we make it two people from the south or two people from here. That would be if every one of you were up for electionary here. But you're not, you're on six-year terms and they're staggered out. And so the opportunity for those to really change, when you look what it takes for all six of you to roll through an election cycle, we're at the next redistricting, though.
So how would that appear on the ballot? Would you have, just, you know, vote for these, for the five that you want to be?
No.
No, because you still are, you only have one.
Right, so if you're up this year, you wouldn't be up against all the other candidates. The only difference would be those candidates aren't restricted to live in this piece of the five. And there would not be a number behind your commissioner's seat. That's the only thing that would change.
And if we do that and eliminate the, the just sub-districts, then that has to go before the voters?
It does not. So you could at your next meeting.
Do a resolution.
Put a resolution, take public comment, and then act on it on your next meeting. You do have to go to the voters if you go to, if you want to do the three.
Yep.
But.
Four, five, either one, five.
Any, any redistricting that may not involve four at large, there.
Yeah, if you just redraw the five, you don't have to ask the voters for permission.
And then we don't have to do the counting of who lives where? I mean, you, you don't have to do the census and.
If, if.
We'll abolish the five.
If you abolish the, the, the sub-districts, you pass a resolution and it's over. All of you keep your same seats, your same election dates, your same cycles. And because you're already elected at-large. And now, if you were elected because this person here, you, only by your district, that would be different. But since you're elected at-large, it's actually a very simple process. And I'll be frank with you that the PhDs that are considering this, they're leaning in the direction of, of abolishment.
I think another advantage of, of that is that if, you know, what, what's been so helpful on our board is the different backgrounds people have in terms of, you know, having a finance background or a building background or a healthcare that to, to be able to discuss that openly so that people then will know that, you know, sitting on the board right now, there's nobody who knows anything about healthcare. But they do know about how to be part of the board. And so that, that might.
Super you.
And you, and, but, that, that might mean that someone with a background in healthcare would say, well, I can run.
Right.
Yep, so that.
Because I'm not restricted to living right there, I can run, that's right.
Well, and the other thing is, you may have in a candidate race or two spots, or even if, I know, I think you would go two, two and one, five. You may have a, let's say there's a candidate race for two spots and you have two people that live in the same geographic district. Both will be great candidates, both are very interested in running. Or more than, more than two, you know, then, or you just, it just opens a, opens a possibility. Let's say, Brad, there's somebody else that you think down south, fantastic candidate, but they can't serve on the district because you're there. It just opens up possibilities.
It, it does, and at the end of the day, I think you're absolutely right, you have a great board and you have that diversity. Wouldn't you love to be sometimes a non-problem hospital where you could just go and cherry pick your board? And say, you know what, we need a finance person, we need a healthcare person. We live in a different democracy here in the PhD world. And at the end of the day, it's still up to the voters. And, and the, the talent pool actually rises when people are restricted to that, to those lines.
We have several non-board members here right now.
Sure.
Before you do each other, we'd like you to also advantage us as long as association. Your good news you brought us today.
Sure, happy to. The last thing I'll say on this topic is, I would encourage you to make your decision quickly. Whatever you choose to do. There, there's, there's a very limited pool of consultants out there to help you do the redistricting maps. And so you can get all their calendars, get time to do that if you choose to do so. And if you choose to abolish them, I, I'm always a fan of get it out of the way so your constituents know and so future candidates know. And so that, that's my pitch is I would encourage you to move quickly on this decision. Finally, and, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that. You guys know AW PhD, we've been doing some really great things since I talked to you last. And one of the benefits of, of the membership that you guys have always been incredibly supportive of, and I thank you for that. To the commissioners, pay attention, coming in May, we have an all-member meeting and we'll make sure you get shared the links to, you can join virtually. We're going to be rolling out a new air, five areas of direct support for PhDs. Strategic planning, grant writing, some help with small equipment purchases, some help with the elections that you've already benefited from, and new initiatives. And, and what I mean by support is, this is direct financial support that will provide PhDs. And we're able to do that because we've done a lot of hard work increasing our intergovernmental transfer program. Every year, we send a benefit to Whidby Island, usually twice a year, in June and December. I think last year, your benefit was around $20,000. This June, we're going to be sending you around $50,000. And then we'll be offering you another benefit in December. We do that twice a year. And so it's, it's pretty exciting. The best part about that money is that we at AW PhD do all the work. And uh when those funds do arrive here at uh at Windy Health, it's unencumbered. Uh you can use that money for whatever you like. Uh there's no reporting requirement. Uh you can use it to to paint a part of life. And uh what we do say to folks is, view it as a windfall and as a one-time money. Uh don't plan it into your budget because I am dependent on the state legislature and the federal governments. And uh and they can change their mind at any time. So I I'm really pleased to, and thank you for allowing me to share that with you. Um. We're we're really proud of the support we've been able to to give you guys here, and uh we're we're gonna look to to continue.
To belong to it, the huge around twenty, twenty something thousand bucks. And that money well invested, just those two years, way, way more than that back, even if you didn't count the money we're getting back. The services, you know, that go to them for several different reasons. That's a great organization.
Thank you. Uh we uh beyond just the May meeting, we're gonna have an opportunity and and uh Jim, I hope you join us in uh. The end of June and July, uh the state auditor will be joining all of our membership and our CFOs. Uh to give an update on hot topics in the auditor's office and an opportunity to interact. We have a survey out right now, uh where you can pre-submit some questions. We're gonna be doing a seminar in October, just about um public information officers and public records requests. And and how to answer those and and the latest there. And then um. With the new law that passed around public meetings, uh regarding the the new um public input on final action and remote meetings. Uh I wanna say June tenth or eleventh, there's gonna be a a webinar we're putting on together with MRSC. Uh to walk through those legislative changes so that you're compliant and understand those as well. Good stuff this year.
Yeah, so just we'll make sure that whatever's on the calendar, that you know, it's done so that he gets it out of all of the board members. Cause we're having some, you know, intervals right now.
Right.
Be nice to make sure that you have John's email.
Will do.
And keeping everything on the calendar that way.
That's great. And I I know I've seen some of your faces when they do these webinars before, and I I I appreciate that, so. A- any other questions before I uh move out and continue your agenda? And if you do have any other questions on redistricting, if you wanna have a private conversation, feel free to call me. Uh when it does come time for uh if if for your resolution, if you choose to abolish. And you have uh your time for public input, I'm happy to to dial in. And be there as a resource to answer questions for your constituents as well. I've done that for the PhDs.
So if we decide to abolish, then we need to have a public input before we go to them?
Ye- yes, you do. It would be a resolution passed by the board and.
We don't, we don't need a public input. It would just be a resolution that we pass. We don't, yeah, we don't need a like a whole community forum. I mean, we could, we chose to, but.
Right. Well, and so, and sorry, sorry, I don't wanna take too much of your time. So that bill I just mentioned that passed uh is in effect June nineteenth. What that new bill says is that you have to take public comment on all final actions of the board. And so that's gonna adjust your agendas a little bit. Quite frankly, you're improving the minutes as a final act. And so um technically, if you do this before June nineteenth, you do not have to take public comment. You do it after you do, because it will be a final action. Um quite frankly, uh I would say public comment is nothing. Uh but I think that's your discretion. But we'll say if you do it after June nineteenth, you will be required for public comment.
Every item on our agenda.
Yeah, and that seminar, we're gonna walk you through how to do, how to build an agenda to do that. In other words, can you do one public comment section of your agenda that covers all the final actions? Or do you have to do it one by one by one by one? We wanna help you with your time and efficiency to do that.
Appreciate you.
You bet. Tune into that one. It's gonna be an important webinar.
Okay, so your involvement down there, you know, we're hearing a lot of things about the hospitals that are actually closing down, you know, that mistake. Are you pretty much about that smaller role?
I I'm not. Uh we're not seeing closures. Um we are seeing, uh particularly in the rural area, there's quite a few hospitals that are, uh their days catch on hands pretty well. Um it's a challenge out there. We have some hospitals that are, uh quite frankly, looking at curtaining services and changing the services they offer. So that they could stay open. Uh absolute closure is not something I'm hearing. But I have, I am hearing some folks saying, you know, we have to change some of the services we offer uh i- in the interest of of keeping financially viable. At nationwide, um there was a hundred and eighty hospital closures last year. I heard on a, just, I was just back today, chatting the other day. Um and uh, you know, that's that's a big number. But we're not seeing in Washington yet. I mean, I'm not saying they're all healthy, but. It's up there.
I'm ready of last five years. You said a hundred and eighty last year.
Last year.
One year?
Yeah. 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 Was that? Yeah. Yeah, it's, it it's hard. I wish I had a magic wand for it, and I wish I could send out Shakespeare for fifty thousand dollars.
Liza, we really appreciated you bringing the good news today and sharing with everybody. It's, you know, we help, everything helps us.
Good. Well, thanks for the opportunity again. Uh you have my information and call me in time.
Okay.
Thanks, man.
This is something that draws me.
Yes.
Yes, um.
Perhaps you leave it on as a, as a standing, I have a standing agenda, I have one of the work sessions for.
Well, if if we have to make decisions by the nineteenth.
We don't necess, we don't necessarily so.
Well, without very.
Yeah, let's make sure.
The 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 new law requires an interim board meeting where there is final action taking some sort of public comment. So it could be written, I mean, it would may not mean much of a change in terms of, we're already allowing public comment of my taking actions. But maybe we could connect your line.
But is, I mean, is there, don't you think that we should have that discussion a little bit so that we can get a sense of what?
Yeah, we can have that here now.
Yeah, that's that's what I mean. I don't want us to move on to the next one because it still feels.
Did you get a copy of the summary?
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Yeah, before we move on, then uh why don't we open up for discussions soon, to fill, I don't know if James, there's a lot of permission where he can. As far as the feelings of the board members that will be heard. Have beaten a certain.
There is.
Are you there? Can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Uh I don't know if you heard what he was talking about when uh whether we wanna abolish all the districts or actually go back in and, you know. Redo the district. If we abolish the districts, we do it by resolution. And they just become at-large, all vital. Uh otherwise, we have to get the census and figure that out, how to do it. And we can make. Three districts and then two at-large, or we have five districts that we have to resign because of population, or we have to do something.
Well, I I had initially thought that we should do nothing. We should just use things as they were. Uh just because of everything else going on having to do with the hospital. But I'm leaning towards the recommendation essentially of doing away with the districts. And just having it open based on his uh analysis of of other districts that it has not influenced or. Had an adverse effect of the representation in those districts. And that would leave everything at 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 large. And it would allow sort of a more diverse group to uh to buy to become commissioners. But if they know that it's not for two hours a month. Uh and um so so my feelings have changed on it in terms of, let's do away with it.
Yeah, I I feel the same thing that it give us an opportunity, like, so the hardest part is on Northwood is trying to fill the three seats. And if we have at-large, we open it up, we get a more diverse group of things. So I was like, you, I thought. Should do three districts and two at-large, but the more I see it, and simplifying it, and it just opens it up. I mean, you're getting voted on island-wide. They vote, you know, I'm running, I have to kick the votes from Clinton all the way to the bridge. You know, the same thing for Greta. She has to get everybody from Clinton to the bridge. So it's not like you have your own district. And I think if we do it at-large, that the board would have to kind of sit down once, you know, remember to come on and say, okay, you know, we really like you to collect contact for.
But also, I think it gives us some greater opportunities to talk about what's missing on the board.
Yeah.
And it would be nice to have somebody that was interested in the hospital work with this sort of background. And then you have a whole island that you can uh sort of try to be a candidate.
Well, and where that comes into play to most point in me is when you have a resignation from the board, you have to fill a seat. We've gone through that, I've gone through it a couple times where we have to find a candidate. And um in that case, uh obviously, you can't pick and choose who's gonna run. Anybody can run. But you can put a request out if you're gonna replace a seat for somebody that retires early. And uh we probably shouldn't say, we're looking for somebody who fits this criteria, but if you put something out and you get. A list of resumes, and if you open it up to island-wide, then you can look at the resumes and say. Wow, this person has significant business experience, or this person has significant whatever experience, and and it draws that.
Yes, I I I think it's a good idea myself. I I think that it's nice to do. It just makes sense to me because it's it's not gonna, it costs us more money either. It's gonna, you know, put five or twenty-five thousand dollars, and it's five and twenty-five thousand dollars, so. Uh it I don't know that it really has that much value to us uh to to be in our own districts. I I I think that. Folks hold that like, Greta, she, you know, I think that she's certainly gonna, you know, want herself to be to be represented, and certainly, I think that she would make an excellent candidate besides that. She's gonna be in it. You know, this is our incumbent to this, a lot of ground where she really knows things, you know, something like that. So and yes, yeah, so I.
And can you move it?
Greta's gonna be on board for another four or five terms.
I'm gonna help you. James, James, you uh have some thoughts?
Uh yeah, I do. I agree with Greta. Um I think we should open it up, and uh Jake's got a very valid point. It allows, if we have an opening. It allows us to have a wider range of candidates to select from, so I'd be in favor um of uh voting to abolish the districts.
So from what I'm gathering, you're gonna go that route, that you would draft up a resolution. You would bring it to the board meeting.
Yeah.
We will discuss it there, and then we have to wait one more meeting, don't we, vote up? I thought you said we have to. We don't? Reduce it to one and then vote on it.
Not, not for this and not until, and I've gotta go back through the new uh Public Corrective, Public Meetings Act. His understanding was a little bit different than mine, but effective, I think, what, June nineteenth, that he said. Um if, that there is, uh my understanding is that. In any meeting where a public act, where a final action is taken, there must be a public comment allowed for that final action. So. Um which wouldn't be really different than the current setup of our meetings.
Think of just double-check it.
Well, I'll double-check.
But I think the directions are that we'll draft up a resolution to abolish all the districts and board on five districts at a time.
Yep.
I wanna make sure that Nancy knows that this is.
Yeah, and and I'll call her between, but why? She's supposed to watch the this day recorded.
So I have, I have a question about this new law. Uh and and I think it it really. Requires us to think a little bit about the public comment part. What could this public comment make if we've already decided on a resolution? I mean, if out of, out of respect for the public comment, it would seem to me that we should. Then do exactly what was intended, was that we discuss it, there's public comment, and then the following meeting that there is a vote on it.
And that's, and that is uh definitely possible. Another way you could do it would be to have the public, you could have, you know. Present your agenda. These are the items that will be voted on for final action. Have a public comment period at the beginning. And and then based on that public comment, that may influence your decision or final action. My only um, I guess, word of caution when thinking about um putting something kind of so set in stone about this is. How we act, operate for final action is that some final actions um probably can't be put off. To, uh you know, to board meetings. So, for example, our unique situation of physician contracts. Um it would really slow the recruitment process if we had to present the contract in the first meeting and then approve the contract in the next.
I think you're more talking about just this particular one.
Well.
Yeah, or or subsequently.
But I'm just talking about, and and I, my understanding is that you're just talking about in general, any type of final action is.
Yeah, if we're required to do that.
If we're required, and and it makes sense too that if we wanna hear public input, it would make sense to take final action and hear public input or, you know.
But so contracts would also come under this, or is it because of the contract that we have with HealthTech?
Well, so any final action, where this is, so. Final action on the Public Meetings Act is defined as any action that the board takes as a body. So final action would include any type of motion to authorize, you know, if we bring a contract to be approved, that's considered a final action.
However, this is a new process also that we set up with HealthTech.
Right.
That all contracts would come to us for approval. And if that became really cumbersome, then perhaps we should reconsider that part of it.
You could, you could, you could reconsider that part uh for amended contract with HealthTech. Um of course, that would take final action from the board to do that, obviously, but.
But instead of like one time.
Yeah, instead of every time. Yeah, so that that is something that that um.
There are past moving things along, especially in the healthcare industry where Lizer, it could be uh influenced. If we can't bring somebody on tomorrow, sometimes almost.
So maybe we should relook at.
That may be a discussion with HealthTech, because I know when we, when we negotiated the HealthTech contract, they had included in the contract that. They would not sign any collective bargaining agreement, physician contract, or real estate contract without, or approval. Which makes sense because those are high-dollar, high-value, high-risk contracts. Um but but in in reality, how that plays into it as well, for board approval and have that full board meeting. They're always recruiting physicians, providers, so that's where it comes up the chain of.
Well, I mean, some things make sense, like the board is included in property.
Yeah.
Uh or things like that, but we haven't in the past been involved in contracts, and it's, you know, looking at them now, it's like, my God, there's where.
Is that all right, John?
Can't we as a board just appoint Greta as the contract signer on it?
She's, she wants it on a.
Yeah, but we don't have to have public input on like Curtis's presentation.
Sure.
Board, we have Kim, you know, Dr. Mallory.
What what a lot of boards do, that I've been involved with in the past, go to our decisions, they just give it, they're gonna be making votes. On some finalized items, whatever they think. They get out out to the public ahead of time, so the public is aware of what you may be voting on. And that they begin in the wording, they have, they have a chance to public comment. That keeps things going, so you're not presenting and then waiting another board meeting. Um just throw that out.
Get together, uh go on and start to draw the agenda ahead of time.
But it should, should they also look at uh the contract with HealthTech about these?
Yeah, we can, we can open that and maybe uh one or. Yeah, we can, we can open that, and maybe one or two of you, I mean, I'm second, I can graph whatever you want to graph. And, yeah. We can talk, we can talk about it at top one.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want Matt to be left out of that. He's offered to help, right, to help with trying to, how do we streamline this thing? So I think we can probably talk to him or.
Yeah.
Say, okay, how do we make this agenda right, run it, and say, okay, how does, other than this work, you know, very well, maybe exactly the same.
So Jake, we have some board resolutions here.
I don't have any resolutions.
We have some contracts.
We do, so there are three contracts.
We, we sent you out a term, term sheet on each of them, one term sheet, we're doing all of them. Two specific contracts.
Yeah, we have.
It looks like this.
Yeah, we have the interim CFO agreement.
We got that. Specific, sure.
Yeah.
And Dr. Sort of, and Dr. Sort of.
So, um, the first two agreements are, they're a little bit, I mean, normally, we don't bring every contract to board for review or approval authorization. Normally, they're just physician contracts or real estate or unit contracts. This is a little bit different, this is, you know, because this is a contract for additional work to HealthTech. Mike is a HealthTech employee, it just seemed better to have the board approve it rather than Mike prove it. So the first one is for interim CFOs, as you know, Jim's on his way out.
Six years.
Six years. But HealthTech identified a, an interim CFO that I can start in sixteen. And it's a very simple contract, thirteen hundred dollars a day, plus the expenses. And, yeah, so that, that. Discussion.
Well, Mike and I sat down and went through these two. The fact that, you know, it just keeps you so much per day. Basically, Mike and the rest of them, we want to agree that, that's based on an eight-hour day, you know, and Mike, the rest of HealthTech, none of them will work at a forty-hour week.
Sure.
Yeah. We're lucky to get twelve hours. Twelve hours in a day, and, you know, and so. Like, I really appreciate what Jim's done. Like Mike said, basically, he's done a huge amount of work already, guy coming in, he's got a leg up on everything. And he, he too, though, will be working long, long hours, you know, to get through this. Where Mike said, it's not, but it just survived the class.
Put him up in a great hotel and stay in. Yeah, so we, we heard the resort in town, Kai Hotel. Not one much better.
And just discussing it with, with Mike, you know, I feel really confident in the fact that, you know, we're, we're getting our money's worked out. Everything that HealthTech's already done for us, pay, give it forward, you know. Really appreciate that, and, and there you go, Mike's really watching this guy, making sure that we're getting our protection out of him, and that he's on, Jim's set the bar pretty high.
So, I, I have a couple of questions.
I, you know, I wouldn't expect much.
Yeah, but I, you know, I'm, I'm also thinking of if somebody's listening to this, that they may have some questions also, so I'm trying to be a safe.
So I, I'm trying to, I wouldn't have sat down with Mike, but I'm like, okay.
You already know this.
But I'm, I'm like trying to act like just Joe Blow's citizen, and this is what I want to know.
So, the, the, the annual cost, this is annualized for somebody working a traditional job. Is that, is, is the total amount sort of the standard for a CFO?
So HealthTech has determined is the going rate to get an interim CFO in.
I'd say it's in a range.
It's in a range?
It's around, it's based on experience and.
And, and is this guy going to get more than Jim did, who is, you know, pulled us out?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Jim did around eight, eight hundred dollars a day, and this guy's thirteen hundred, so he's not performing a lot.
No wonder you were going to quit.
Mike had already talked about that, that we expect him to get forty percent more money than Jim.
But Jim's probably in the.
I mean, we're setting the bar.
But that, that's, and, and Jim, you talked to this man, and think that he can do what you've done?
I, I think we liked him. We, uh, we, me, Mike and I actually got a test interview on my phone Sunday morning at eight. And now most of, that's not always our best time of the week, right, on a Sunday morning at eight? Because he sounded great, he was energized and articulate and ready to go.
And, and what is the expectation, if this is a, an interim CFO, how long is his tenure going to be?
I don't know, we don't answer that, but typically, it's six months.
If he's not limited, like I was limited.
Six months?
He can, he'll stay until the program is done.
I was going to say, unless we find a competent CFO, maybe on, looking nationwide right now.
And would this fellow be someone who potentially could be changed from an interim to a permanent?
No, he won't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. He's a, he's a long coming interim kind of guy.
Thank you.
I think also they thought was, um, we still need to recruit for a permanent CEO. And CEO likes to pick their team, and that probably, I think, HealthTech is going to really ramp up the permanent CFO services until the permanent CEOs in place.
What they're talking about, and Jake and I, was is that they'll really start pushing hard here at the end of this month, with the national insurance that's going on. Where a CEO, start the interview process, do all the things you're doing, and by the end of August or September, September, they should find a new CEO. A CEO could pick his new CFO. So that's.
Overlapping.
Well, I say, he would pick, you would pick, he could, the CFO.
Mike guaranteed that before that happened, he kept us a hundred and twenty days cash on the month.
If I was any dress, he had the arm behind me.
Wow, already have all these agreements in place.
Jim, I have a question for you about how are we doing in your department as the support staff, et cetera? Is this, I mean, you've done amazing things here so far, so it's just, I'm just checking, are we, you got some good backups there for the?
Not yet, we're still very weak.
Okay.
What we have, what I have, we can't even do. And we have someone formerly known as Payroll, but she has a whole much broader skill set. And so she's moving up fast in organizations, so she's stepping in more now to help me, using on the accounting side. Besides her, we have, I have a controller. And HealthTech is helping us, even today, integrating new people to get an interim controller. I can give that in, we'll, we'll get by for a while. We still want to find one or two accountants, really staff accounts to do that. If then, accounting, what we need to have done. That's, that's what we're seeing. Ron, I wanted to point out, Mr. Boyer has seen it up in my proportion.
Okay. James?
Yeah, I've, I've looked at the resume, and I, I did notice that he does move around a lot, but I had one, um, one question regarding the salary. As long as we're sort of paying him that much per day, is it possible to put a, an annual cap on the amount that, that we would be paying him?
Right, just, just one thing for the board to think about. Uh, if this was a typical smooth flowing hospital, about an interim CFO, then he'd probably be working five days a week. But this is a turnaround situation, um, and he, he may work as much as twenty-four, twenty-five days a month, that's what I've been doing. I might have accepted him Sunday, uh, by and large, go home for a week. So you can put a cap on it and just tell him not to work, okay? You know, who wants to stay with the cap? It doesn't work, but right now, it's, I'm doing work.
I mean, the thing about it, we're going to be able to monitor, uh, weekly basis, a monthly base, whatever, where he's at.
True.
Yeah. The biggest thing is that if we're paying him, we want to see results. Yeah, that's, that's what engages, you know, just like, please give him, you know, a good job, appreciate it. When you pay for yourself, you know, you've kept us going. So I think that's something that, you know, this is a group we're going to be doing, is that he's an interim, and we'll monitor where our actions.
Maybe not, like Greta, you and I talked about, we can talk together about what you need to look for, what you need to ask, and, and kind of reporting what you want to see. So we might have time for you now and yourself to do some of that conversation.
Well, I think really the community would be, our, here has to thank you, it's really been, pull back the curtain, you see the center there, so I really appreciate your hard work.
Do we need, is this, uh, do we need to make a resolution to approve, is there a contract?
Just, the, just by motion, if there's a motion to authorize Mike to sign the contract, that's, that's.
Well, I would make, I would make a motion to give Mike the authorization to sign the agreement with the interim CFO.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I vote aye.
Okay, so the second one is our HealthTech account receivable service.
And this might be better to have gendered one.
We're replacing HRG, I'll stay tomorrow. And so, uh, our patient natural services staff, which have shown the financial medias reports, they've been doing a really good job reducing their counter receivable. It's HRG that didn't hold up there in the bargain. Um, we also, where they normally have like a ninety-day runout of payment on the counter statement, we cut it down to thirty days. And so after thirty days, all the lines are, so they've got a lot of working process.
So the, the last day, you said?
It's tomorrow.
Yeah. And all of this will be internal again?
Yes, uh, with the exception of this person, uh, HealthTech identified a real strong Medicare certified professional. Used to be part of the HealthTech world, she's come back, she's going to work for us virtually to help us work on. Because I'll show you the payer mix, and so we're funding for fifty percent of our counter receivable is Medicare. It needs specialized work, and so she's going to help us do that. Then they'll quickly move, she will be able to start virtually next week. I think between that and our patient natural services staff, we'll do better.
And how long is the agreement for?
This is a, I believe this is a year-long agreement, and this renews automatically, but there is a thirty-day clause.
Yeah.
So essentially, it's a thirty-day.
But we're just, we're just doing a replacement here. By any reason.
True. HealthTech has the experience, they used to do a lot of this outsourcing of counter receivable, they cut back a lot. Now we're getting them started again because we needed their help, and they found this person for us, so that's how it's going to work.
I believe the comment I heard is that this is really just a catch-up, just caught back up to where I know, you know, if it's envisioned as a permanent ongoing.
Right, but I mean, it gives us something for you now, even CFO and, and if you're not on finals. So this is a little one-year agreement, but this is.
We can get out in thirty days, okay?
And I do want to make a note, so the original contract with, and with the, the summary that I sent, we sent out last night, it didn't have a cap on, you know, the payment terms were forty dollars an hour times the total number of employees that are working, right, on, on the accounts. And then the language says, well, the number of employees that work will depend on the number of accounts that, that we receive. And I didn't really feel that comfortable with that language, because it was just too open-ended, there was no kind of cap. So, so I was going back and forth with their contracts person, and the new contract says, um, that AR services will not exceed eighty hours in any one month period with our prior. So that's, it's, I mean, I'm much more comfortable with that, you know, we're not going to be caught with any big surprises in any one month.
It's more picture, AR is picture. Because if you work, um, if you work, come up on this, it's going to be more than that.
This is, this says any, eighty hours in any one month period, and it might be because they said, they talked to her, they talked to Joy, and we only requested one, one person, and this person works also for another organization, so we'll be working part-time, so.
There you go, there's an issue with it.
Good enough.
Would you like to make a motion to authorize them to sign the contract?
I'll make the motion to authorize Mike to sign the contract for HealthTech to see whether services are good.
Any discussion? Or embrace, all in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Next one is the Dr. Sorely contract amendment.
So, uh, Mike and myself, once in my field, we've had lots of discussions with Dr. Sorely. But continuing to serve as agreement, Michael, like her, she's very invested in, in ensuring that, that, uh, Dr. Williams has sufficient tutoring and mentorship from a surgical standpoint. She's really committed to Dr. Williams, and so this would amend her contract, essentially moves her from a full-time status to a per diem status, so she wouldn't be providing clinic work or call, although there is that possibility left open. Um, but she would just be a per diem surgical first assist, uh, you know, available to, to our providers if, if they need somebody to assist in surgery. So it also removes her previous attachment on compensation, moves her to a straight productivity model of compensation. So she can get fifty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents for each work R B that she generates as a first assist. Uh, and, and there's a great, there's a difference between the person doing the surgery, they might get eighteen work R Bs for the surgery, and the first assist might get three R Bs for the surgery. So she would get work R Bs for anything that she generates. Uh, we also put in there that she would get, we pay her a thousand dollars for any twenty-four hour call shift, should she choose to take the call shift. And then it's also just clarified that moving to per diem status, she wouldn't be, to not be a benefit, or if she still moving on. Still remain on as another staff, she still remain on as our employee technically, just switch her status.
Is, is she going to open up for you, or do you send?
She's going to take about three months to rest and contemplate what she wants to do with her medical career. Uh, she needs some time off, for sure. And then hopefully, once she gets done with it, we can stand close to her. Hopefully, she'll just have to do what she loves best, whatever that is, we all know you.
Okay. Well, I, I'll make the motion then, that a CEO can sign the contract, or Dr. Michael Sorely's, uh, made a contract.
Second. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Thank you. And then the one that was on there is, I wanted to pretty much. Administrative height of, damn, you're right, okay, thank you.
I have three reports in front of me that I want to talk briefly about. One, I keep you, you have a cash flow forecast. One, I want to keep you, you know, cash flow forecast. And this is moving as we have changes that we need to make in it, and so. I'm gonna start from the bottom, just talk a little bit about us and, and we can start from the top and the bottom. Days cash on hand, you see that in March, that first, the first column at the bottom, it's eighteen point ten days. In twenty-six point five, seven days, April. Does that feel? Mm-hmm, they are. And a lot of paperwork today at thirty days. Cash. So things have been picking up. Um, there's a lot of detail here, but in the report, the tax levy is reconciled in, and I have the second hand out, I'll get to it in a moment. I'm sure there's some of the details of that, so you have a good understanding, and the takeaway that you can look at to understand how the tax levy is paid to us. And so that's there. Uh, we also added in the expense reductions and the revenue opportunities from the strategic action plan. We have added those in, and they are in the month starting in July on this report. Revenue and inflows are on top, expense reductions are in the bottom, in the disbursement section. I have put in seventy-five percent of what our action plans say we would generate from new revenues and expense reductions. Only seventy-five percent. A little, a little over bar. We hopefully will do better than, but even with that seventy-five percent, you see our days cash on hand as we get through June. Notice, if you go into July, the column. Go up to where the tax labels are, notice that there's nothing in the months of July through November. You see that? Initially, county has told us they will not pay the second half of the, uh, tax levy like they paid the first half of the tax levy. That's why you see to the left, they're spread out. Like, they're all there in those months of March to June, because it's not being spread, it's been paid over the months. It's all in December. Now, right now, that looks like we'll be okay because you're looking back to the bottom, to August, and look at the days cash on hand, well. August, September, October, November, we stayed around twenty days. Okay, we stayed around twenty days. It jumps to thirty-seven days because. The six and a half million dollars that's up there is about twenty days of cash that comes in with that tax levy. But when it's paid. I also have got this only in at ninety-eight percent of total levy. The treasurer is very much on top of us and understands the ebb and flow of these, of these tax payments. You know, when all of you pay your tax levies, and Johnny, that's what I know, but, but the tax labels are all coming in on time. But some people wait, and so it's only ninety-eight percent that we get collected. Only ninety-eight percent, so I've only got ninety-eight percent in, in tax.
Even your projected days of cash on hand. Why on September? Still better than I have in the past when. You know?
Years.
Yeah.
So.
Even, even.
Around twenty.
Yeah, but sometimes that looks way better than.
So I have a couple of questions. Last time we saw this report, um, by August, we were like at zeros. How, how is it that we go from zero to twenty days?
Good question, good question. Two things. Look back in the March column. Yeah. Under the cashier receipts section. Notice I'm adjusting the beginning cash balance, that's on the top row. To the row just above the days cash on hand at the bottom. I'm adjusting now to make sure that we're meeting the, the cash balance that I had at the end of the month. Some combination of more receipts and less dispersment, I have two point nine million dollars to add into the bottom line.
And these were actual dollars?
It's, it's real money because the cash balance changed. So we understated until I put that number in there.
So in June, we have a major, what, six million dollar?
Yes. Yes, and the main, that's a good question, what are we gonna do?
That's not a agreement.
No. We have in process. It, our refinancing. And the first part, the only part we now have a firm term sheet on is a ten million dollar. Bond from one of the banks. That was made, that is the working capital, plus now they rounded it up to ten million. We are being prepared to be able to close that home. So we've asked Heritage Bank to give us a, a ninety-day extension from June one, ninety days, so we can get this done. And, um. We have asked them, we're in the process of discussing with them, how much of that ten million we use to pay down the six point eight million that we owe. It's likely we'll pay some, but not all. And in finance, the rest of it, we've asked for. And we're in discussion with them about extending that over five years. And we talked yesterday about the interest rate that would be involved with it. So we're working that through at this moment, that happens. We would put ten million dollars on here as a source of funds. And then I'll put what we paid Heritage Bank as a dispersment.
So is the bank that we're getting the loan from the same bank that we owe money to?
No.
So why should they then even be involved in how we use the ten million dollars that you're getting from another bank?
We have to know with that, you owe all.
Yeah, but you're, you're saying that they would let us know how much they wanted? And don't they want the whole thing?
No. Heritage Bank. We, Heritage Bank will. We talked about how much of the ten million we give them to pay down the six million, two point eight million dollar debt.
So we're not gonna pay the whole thing off?
I don't want to pay the whole thing off. And, and, and. I went through this, we, we had a good conversation with Heritage yesterday afternoon. You're, again, look at these July, June, November months of blank, right, there's a little tax over there. This money that I would have left from the ten million minus what we paid Heritage. I've told them I need that for that break in tax levy that we don't have. For those months, because I don't want to take any chance that those summer months bottom out for twenty days. I'm on a safety valve for that.
Would that kind of check out that? If they, how much do you think that you want Heritage to pay out of the tail? That will still make it.
Too many.
Too many. Finance.
Four point eight million. Over five years. And then, and then interest payment, as we talked about yesterday.
And, and why doesn't the county, why isn't the county willing to, uh, do the same thing with the second round of, um, property taxes they did for the first?
Here's, here's why. I'll also say that our successors will go back to Commissioner Bacon Jonathan St. Clair in a late summer, really quality. Remember what you did, and we'll do it again. The answer from the treasurer is, they were going to do this one time for us. They are in a position to give everybody their portion of the tax levy as they receive it. So it was a one-time special offer for us, so being respectful of what they told us and, and that they have delivered. We will just wait until later and see if things are different. One, we need earlier tax levy or we don't. Or they want it, they're able to do it and pay it as they receive it, and we go forward from there.
So essentially, if, if Heritage Bank will just allow the two million and then carry the other four million. And then we'll be okay. And we can just carry it through and then.
We'll have a.
Then we don't have to, yeah, and then we don't have to go back to try to get the property tax early.
Right, that's right, that's.
That's, if, if, if this holds.
That's sort of my mathematics of eight million, and the tax levy is at eight point three million, right? And so that's sort of the rationale.
Jim? When we get our finances, you know, like you said, each time it's improving, days cash on hand. Would there be an opportunity to go back, say, a year from now and reapply those suits of law and get the bonds we financed? That would work on.
Or that's.
We got turned down because of the finances where we're at, but it's improved, it's a opportunity to do that.
There is. There is, but you know, this, our refinancing of the two thousand nine, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen is still in play. There is still a couple of banks, still one willing to do the whole thing. So it is still in play. Yes, interest rates have gotten higher. It can go much higher and it will kind of mess up any benefit that we could get out of the, out of it. But we, but we're still going down that road, but. Now, what, skip that ten million, I should make sure I tell you that, um, of their requirements, that, that bank. That going concern footnote that's in the twenty twenty audit. Needs to be. Removed from the twenty twenty one audit. Which was that, remember that footnote?
Others go to John.
We're concerned, I'm very concerned, I was beginning to continue on.
I see.
Was, it was his question.
Well, according to this, we certainly will.
Thanks, so the auditor, preliminarily, we just write up what we're doing and we've got that. And so they'll use that, and they will most likely remove that footnote, so when does that do out?
Movies. Basically, we're gonna get a, we'll try to get the auditor to remove that note.
The fieldwork is supposed to finish by tomorrow. I still expect to have a preliminary audit report through May nineteenth for me. It can't be final because the Medicare cost report won't be done in time. That will change, like it did for twenty twenty, it will change the outcome. More, more bottom line or less bottom line, depending on what that cost report shows us. Due to, the hospital needs to do a mid-year cost, no less than every six months. So we have a, we know where we're headed, and we don't, we don't have the benefit of that.
I think it's common practice, and Kelly will do that too. Or we would not have done that.
Now, movies, which I was trying to get into, Mike and I have, have a call, a dress rehearsal with, uh, our financing team. Piper Sandler and Bradley Payne. And because we're having a ninety-minute interview with movies on Monday. For three. To address questions, so we've addressed, answered those questions, we provide material in support of our turnaround like the cash flow forecast, so we provided things. Uh, Piper Sandler and Bradley Payne will guide us in those conversations. They'll make sure Mike and I, as we answer questions, we, we answer them correctly, and today, today is three thirty, is the dress rehearsal, just us and Piper. So they'll join us, Mike and I, Monday at twelve thirty, we'll run the phone with movies. We need movies, even more instead of certification, we don't need a rating. Well, we don't need a rating, but, uh, there are at least five banks. Not willing to buy our new bonds because of that movie's report from March. So they are waiting for us to get a, a review from that movie's report. So it's, it's a big, big report, big thing to do this afternoon, and a big thing if we're gonna do Monday, to convince them to, uh, improve our ratings.
James, you have a question?
Yeah, Jim, uh, what's the interest rate that Heritage is proposing to, uh, require from us?
Sixty-seven percent of the prime rate plus fifty basis points.
How does that?
They haven't finalized it. And so, uh, what I'll say is if you do that calculation, it comes out to three point oh two percent. Right now, we're paying two point ninety percent on the existing bond.
Uh, yeah, I think that's still reasonable.
It's still surprisingly good, yeah.
I have one, one more question on this. Uh, this was the estimated cash forecast revised. Now, can we assume that the March and April numbers here are factual, not an estimate, the real thing?
They're excellent, any cash balance, both of those months is where the cash report shows me.
And everything else is part of the estimate?
Yes, yes, yes.
Jake, real quick, what time?
Three thirty.
Or sorry, not three thirty.
Real quick. Curtis.
Is he kidding?
I think, I'm a good. And you have a page that's the tax levy. It's maybe more like TMI, but what this shows to point from left to right. The first column is what we have received year-to-date total through the end of, uh, the last week of April. You see that first column, year-to-date totals was five million, nine hundred eighty-seven thousand. That's how much we've been paid, and we, we received that. By looking at those weeks across the bottom, or I may express the top, from January tenth to February tenth, all those days. See how it rolls across? You get to the very last column. The total, we received three million, two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars on April twenty-sixth for the week, four seventeen to four twenty-three. Bottom left, now, the total levy in the first column. You see the sixteen million, six forty-seven, that's the total of the three levies, the broken out above that. Fifty percent is eight point three million. Okay? Um, year-to-date. There's that same five million, nine hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars that we received year-to-date. So what's left to be paid is about two point three million dollars. So what the county told me just an hour ago. We'll receive next week on May the tenth. The, the distribution that is for the last week in April. I mean, this is April twenty-third, okay, it's April twenty-fourth, April thirty, they have to turn up the month. And then they'll give us tax receipts for the week, May one, through May seven. So we'll get two distributions at the same time, we're looking at, I, I hope, fairly close to two point three million dollars. So that's what this report will, will show you. That page is just a, as a handout for your records, uh, about payrolls, so that, uh. You press sometimes where our payroll is, and the left-hand side of the page is twenty twenty-one. And the right-hand side is sort of year-to-date twenty twenty-two. And the top four lines or five lines are our commercial, that's about eighteen percent. Um, of our total is the commercial. You see Medicaid, Medicare Advantage. In the total column, it's your fourteen point six four percent, thirty-seven point eight three percent, so there's about fifty-two percent in twenty twenty-one. You look at crossing twenty twenty-two, those same, that same two rows, and you've got about fifty, fifty percent, or higher, fifty-three percent. Our. Tricare. Third one, the bottom, about one point eight seven percent last year, eleven point ninety percent this year. So that's what this will show you is our pay. It's that eighteen percent commercial, which is where we get the benefit of our pricing increases. Our charge management increases. And I use about ten percent instead of eighteen percent, but I thought would be probably to get paid. The other toes at the bottom, the source is the eighteen point seven eight percent for inpatient. Eighty one percent for outpatient, that's just just the revenue. We're about eighty one percent of our total gross revenue comes from outpatient services. This year it's up to eighty two point one percent. That's typical with rural hospitals.
I appreciate that chart.
That's all I have.
One one thing I was gonna ask about Kevin Curtis, you're here on the ground floor. Seeing these parts, seeing our cash. You've seen them before. How are you feeling and how are you thinking? Feeling encouraged?
I feel very positive, I mean, obviously Jim and Mike are doing a phenomenal job. I think this organization is finally going in the right direction. We're trying to get that out to all staff. You know, I I know the staff still has some, they're unsettled, they you know, they don't understand all the numbers. They they're questioning when we go from four ICU beds down to. You know, that when things get reduced, they they need to understand why that's happening. So we explained to them, you know, like I was talking to an nurse the other day. Who had concerns, you know, what why we're at two beds. You know, for ICU, for example, but I explained what our daily average census is, and then she understood. You know, that we're staff, we're trying to staff and do things correctly. These numbers, I mean, they're great because we actually trust them. For the first time in the three years I've been here, I have faith in what, you know, what will be shown.
Well, we're not just getting numbers, we're getting. All the accounting that came up.
Yes, there's a lot of work and a lot of stuff behind the scenes and and things are being communicated and there's a lot of transparency. And and you know, I just think it's it's a completely different environment for for us. And then Curtis will agree to that, I'll let him speak for himself, but that's how I feel and I think that's the things I'm hearing. And you know, I think. There's still stuff that shows up in the paper and there's still things, you know, people that are are still scared and nervous. I think this will continue to go, you know, as we continue to push everybody, you know, all the leaders getting this information out. Communicating this and explaining this, you know, the the confidence level will continue to arrive, you know, right, right, raise up among the, you know, all our employees.
Curtis, I know that, you know, with the raises for the nurses, has that gone over with positive?
It's gone over well, we talked to the management council, like this is key. And it's already going out, Connor's done that, been talking with the days cash on hand because we talked about it. Ignocium before and people remember, and then three days. You know, the one day, two days. This last pay period, I went out and it was like a kid and they. Just many days cash on we have, well, we've done payroll. What, twenty five, no. And so it's it's funny, as a banker, I'm still going, yeah, that's not really, really good. But for the hospital, oh my God, so the two, two.
Yeah, but you guys have, you guys have to deal with so much of the working people.
Yes.
Hospitals.
And that that information.
That's important, you know, it's like things that are happening, you know, coming back is a positive.
Yes.
I mean, it's kind of make their life a little easier, it's a little less stressful when you see things going in the right direction.
It does, and I think part of it too is pushing the other leaders to push that information down. Because when we talk about the ICU and I put it very detailed email. On that, on why we're doing it, here's what you is. Believe it or not, we had to go to a staff meeting with the unit and it passed. Instead of having it, they're saying no, we could have still done it because we have management rights and have Mike override that. But the explanation, it passed, the that makes sense. The nurses in the unit get it. And it's just, it part of the problem I think we have here is we do push things up by email. And not even reach their emails. And I think. That's part of the issues, trying to get a twenty four seven operation, getting that information disseminated in a way that everyone reads it. It's hard. But people are starting to to get their, okay, okay, now I can read for my friend here. To come more, they're getting that comfort level again and. Yeah, and I think if what. Fuckers now that I've worked here. Have never seen it, I mean, this is me, Jim has explained it. Because I I would go to the old finance, explain this to me, it doesn't make sense. Well, uh. I really can't, I know that, what do you mean you can't, that's a five hundred thousand dollar charge on my my cost center, explain it to me. Jim has been able to do that in his presentations in the leadership rooms, and he does it in layman terms when people understand. Yeah, you have the.
Going forward, we need your reports back, you know, what have. You know, as a board, we need to know how are people reacting to things so that if we're getting out there, where are we stumbling at? You know, there again, we can't fix a problem, we must know about it and if we're doing something, it's not going all well and you know that.
Well, here's an, here's an example. Ann Bell and PACU. And and they don't have a manager at this point, so she reached out to me, she goes. Curtis, we're hearing rumors, and she was part of the WSNA, would you send an email out to the members in PACU and OR? So I've got to listen to everyone and I'm going to take that email that I sent out to everyone on what we're doing. They didn't even get, I I put out last week. A very detailed email explaining layman terms, the cash flow agenda. He gives us these numbers now, we need to start looking at it. That was never passed on to the these employees. So that's where finding those loops, it's it's trying to figure out how to make sure that everyone gets it. You know, and it's not that I'm trying to go around anyone, but it's like, this is good information to have. And so I'm going to reach out to them and send it directly to them because they're not getting it. And that's part of our problem too, we've got key people missing still, it would disseminate a lot of disinformation.
Yeah, we as a board need to know what's working, what's not, you know.
It's working.
We're, it's. Don't want to go backwards, don't want to go back.
I think it's important, board needs to know, because I know you you work directly with Mike, but. Since since the first leadership meeting that Mike held, and I had people text me during meetings, other leaders, you know, what a brother. We really were impressed. He has been consistent, he's been transparent, I mean, every Friday we're having leadership meetings, just a quick thirty minutes. And getting the updates out there and the information, and it's just been, I mean, it's been phenomenal. And it's spreading, spreading throughout the organization.
When we, you know, hopefully we do get a permanent CEO. That the timeframe will be, he'll be here on the mic share, but it's like bringing the things that are working, you got it too. Hey guys, you know. Bar's been set, we're not going blow it again. Going forward, so we're sure that it's consistent.
I think a lot of us too, when we we do go to the table. We're not going back to status quo. If if we start going backwards and it doesn't stay, I can tell you I'll be the first to leave. Because I I was hesitant to even come to the table, with the known history of administration. Because I was born and raised here, and I was a commercial banker in this community. And I did not want to go down with the status quo. I'm going to be a part of hospitals here, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna save it, with their leadership, they have done that. And everyone else is at the table, Dr. Miller, Tim, Jake, we're at the table, we're fixing things. It's not this drag on drag on drag on stuff.
Just don't want to do a bold fix here and all of a sudden, the the one thing that always bothered me is it has such a tendency to go, well, this is the way we always did it. Back to that.
Oh no, 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 there is no going back to the way it was. There are no sacred cows anymore.
Yeah, and so like I said, it's coming relying on you guys to keep the board informed on that. So I know we, I'd love to keep both Mike and Jim, but you know. They they read the contract, they put that fine print in there and they.
Well, and I think the other thing too, when we're looking at fixes, we're not looking at workarounds. It's okay, let's fix this, but let's fix it right. Let's be smart. It it's, that's where we've got to be smarter in the leadership, to say, okay, let's spend a little more time, maybe spend a little more money, but let's do it right from day one. Then we can engender the trust of staff in our community, and that's what we. So. Now, you guys just hired a physician to be on health tech, we supported you on that, we still do. You've been a wonderful wealth of information. I hope I don't cry to Jim.
We got these guys coming in three o'clock. I don't want to exclude you there.
I reiterate. Dramatic improvement. In both. The finances and the attitudes and. Comfort of our staff, I can't say we're. Great place, way better than we were before. Our staff, I believe, has confidence that we're here to stay. Out about the close of doors, we are filling many of our open positions. Especially our critical ones, we still have. Significant shortage of medical assistance, but. And a couple are in on the outpatient side, but we're doing really well, pretty much everything helps. So. Our our managers are learning. Finance. And fully understand the budgets in a way we never have before. Our managers are often changed. And we are changing everything everywhere. There's nothing that hasn't been changed. And every day I get suggestions for. Something new. That we should try or do, or a problem that needs to be fixed that's been around for a long time, people have given up on trying to fix it. And now they're bringing it back up, it's a complete thing. This is the environment in which we can actually change. So. That's the good news, the bad news is my to-do list just keeps getting longer and longer, there's all these great ideas that we need to work on. So it's, it's really, it's been. A very stressful but positive.
Jake. I don't have any level one update that I have outside of the executive session, it's just to point out that. On the twenty ninth, April twenty ninth, governor ends the issue proclamation twenty dash twenty eight dot sixteen. Which rescinds the proclamation twenty dash a five series and the twenty dash twenty eight series. Which all means basically effectively June one, the restrictions on Open Public Meetings Act and Public Records Act. Go away as they related to nineteen, so. Public Records Act just reverts back to normal requirements. And Open Public Meetings Act, there is a new bill. But essentially, there's no after. As of June one, there will no longer be a requirement to hold virtual meetings. And but if verbal comment is, public comment is taken during a meeting, then we have to. Provide a telephonic or a virtual option for somebody to call in, patch in to provide comments, so. The biggest, and there may be other things too that I'll I'll dive in, I'll send an email out to the board, but. The biggest thing that that would impact is, for example, our work sessions, we don't pick public comment. We would not necessarily be required then to have a virtual option, dial-in option for work sessions. So, yeah, let's just. Raise that for for your awareness.
And just so everybody knows, that three o'clock will be going into the second session. So Mike. You have thirty items on your list, but I promise I will not cover all of them.
I I do want to concur with everybody, we've been working together as a team. There's been no egos, we leave our ego at the door when we come into our our meetings and any suggestion to. Where Curtis Mike could improve that he gets from his folks or Dave or me, if anyone. We listen to the people on the ground level. And a lot of things we've done have come from talking to them, that's close. So my hat has to go off again to. The three guys sitting right there and two on both of my sides here, work together as a team, we've done all this in the last couple. Of months and we have much left to do. So with that, I'm just kind of moving with. One amazing things that I think Jake and Gar kind of led the transition on and with help from everybody here. This is amazing, renegotiated Simmons' tenure contract. Fifty million dollars to put new diagnostic imaging equipment in. And we went back and. Renegotiated with them and Simmons agreed to take two million six hundred nineteen thousand. Off of the ten million. Over the next seven months, waived free payments. Of course, for March, April, May, which helped our days in cash that Jim has here. And that reduced our our payment down. To thirty two thousand, by thirty, by thirty two thousand. In Jim's cash flow statement, he does have a place on there that talks about Simmons' contract to be. And that helped, Jim said, there's a combination of revenues increasing and. Expenses decreasing, that got us the six million dollar hidden cash balance and that. So we have it in there, just nice work, I mean, that's two million dollars, Jim, I almost earned his salary, I was eight thousand. You know, and and it's done, the whole team did. Part of that, again, this is based, Simmons and been working with folks here, have agreed to help us open up our floral room. And that was a. How can I say this, it is something that. Some of the staff or some of the leadership here felt like it wasn't that important to have a floral room. At the time, hadn't really pushed it, these guys have. And a floral room is bread and butter that you use in our radiologist department, so. We'll be opening that back up. And then another little smaller team room next to it with the help of Simmons. And so this is bringing a great, a lot of net revenue, I'll bring it to you at the end of this year, we can get this done for us next year. Think you're gonna get the floral room, Jim?
I could be done this year. If I could interject, so we've had calls, listings, and they are actually presenting some equipment that is just floor mounted for floral. And a new CT that had that, and they're they're trying to confirm the CT fit into the existing space, but these these new pieces of equipment. Will actually fit into the existing rooms, and other than maybe a little bit of painting and just just to get them in and up and running. We're still trying to determine the electrical to make sure we don't have to make any changes there, they may hopefully cover that cost if we do have to do any electrical changes, but. Yeah, hopefully it'll be very limited room improvements, just to get the equipment in and get us back up and running, so.
We can get, just get an equipment in, the electrical would be a least of the problems. Getting them in there.
I would also, it's amazing, the technological advancements that occurred in just the last three or four years. The equipment that they are, they've agreed or possibly ready to put in are so much better. Than what may originally be originally contracted for, in terms of the quality, the safety. That these new, exactly, new CT scans, dosages, the dosage exposure to the patient dramatically less. Image quality is dramatically higher. And the the footprint of the equipment is much smaller. Than it was just three or four years ago, and. It's just phenomenal, as a clinician, looking at looking at this new equipment, it's just, I'm not a radiologist, but I would run away. By what, it looks like we're gonna be able to get it with our existing contract. This is very exciting.
To to do four of, you know, let's say there's about twenty different procedures you can do on four of them. Probably thirty percent of them require a radiologist to be on staff. Often that number, radiologist has to be. Typically, in hospitals outside, you can not have a radiologist on site. So it kind of limits what you can do for. Amazingly, we have a radiologist on site a couple days a week here. Wow, you know, I thought Gar or someone would do, no, not a radiologist here, they are coming virtually. So. We can begin to do this will improve. Quality of care in our patients and go on by and get it done. Um, so next item is real quick and it is also reflected on the cash flow that that Jim just showed, we don't take that for everything. Uh, which is kind of me, I tried to. But, uh, he, Jim was reconciling our our twenty twenty possible. And some money to me, nine hundred thousand dollars, one million, nine hundred thousand was to come in back in the center. He never got seen in, so he was a bit on the top, basically. And they said, whoops, we, you know, we just sent that to you. So Jim said, well, uh, would you mind? So we're like, yeah, and they said, yes, uh, we're going to do, I think, in the next like ten, fifteen working days and I think that, uh. Late this week, that we should get that in and it's reflected on the cash receipts. Says twenty twenty interim Medicare possible. So you'll see what that's coming in, rather than say, well, how'd you jump from, you know, how all this cash you get in here and our days go up? Well, it's just a combination of the action steps we've taken, Medicare cost reports, just one app, any of those things, so. You know, without him putting in front of the topic, I don't know, it it still would have been talked for a long time. You know, they're they're just weren't going to send, it was off a little stack somewhere. So, so, uh, thanks, thanks to Jim on that. Help takers had a, an HR consultant in here and a, um. A revenue cycle person in in last, you know, this last week or so, looking at it and making improvements and suggestions. And Jake is a, is a backup, pick up and start working again. Always work, but the WSNA contract is complete. Now, there are three more behind that one, now this is one that I'll begin, but in the next, they'll follow in over the next several months. So we'll begin negotiating those contracts. Another, uh, it, another place that we found we could contain consciousness, we had an unwritten policy here that we can do severance payouts to employees. Not ceasefully employees, but just to regular employees. Um, we found that that was a practice and last year we paid out a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in severance. And I believe that CEO thing, correct me if I'm wrong, should pay these out. Is that that right?
So the severance that was paid out last year was, uh, part of the production, of course.
Um, so. At any rate, um, there were, there were other, um, other dollars in there too. Uh, like if you hadn't met your, um. They thought, you know, if you're not bested, they also put a money in. So there was a lot of issues going on, we are suffering financially, able to pay that commission. So that stopped, um, we told everybody to move severance payouts unless it's approved by the CEO and board of finance. I mean, if we're going to have a discussion, yes, I think we won't come up with some reason to pay someone severance. I find it hard to believe that we will, that we could. Um, so there's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars savings, but with that at fifteen thousand this year. Um, we had one employee resign and she got that five thousand dollars. Uh, we had two others that were terminated and they got substantial, I'll put fifteen thousand this year. So, um, that's a two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars in severance. All in one way, um, we we continue with our strategic plan. We implemented a lot of actions that we've disclosed to you and to the newspaper, so that we're doing. And we have a list as long as law and get to this. Uh, that we will come back with, we'll implement actions, set a consultation. We, uh. We did release all of our action steps, financial results, cash flow, the newspaper, the dashboard, two articles resulted. Uh, the newspaper, thank you, Adam.
Yeah, I I'm a little concerned about this note that, uh, James released an article on behalf of the board. I know nothing about that and that really distressed me when I saw it there. Uh, not only because I didn't know anything about it, but also that historically, uh, the way we have done things is that. It's the president of the board that speaks on behalf of the board after consultation and keeping us informed. And I think we need to be really careful about not having five people, you know. Being interviewed, talking, representing the board without their inclusion, so please, uh. I I would like to say I don't want to see that happen again.
Well, I'll send the gems, they talk to you guys then, it's all.
I have no idea.
Can I respond to that?
What is notes?
Well, first of all, that wasn't, uh, put in there, uh, as a representative of the board. I sat down with the, uh, with the editor of the newspaper, we had a very long discuss- discussion. And he aired a lot of his complaints about what was going on in the hospital. He said, first of all, there is absolutely no outreach from the hospital, so he feels very hostile about it. He said, the only outreach he'd had was when Mike Layfield called him. He expressed a lot of anger about one of the board members who said that the paper was not publishing any news, any of, any of the articles that we wrote. The letter that I sent to the editor was signed by me, it was vetted by Mike, uh, Tim also reviewed it. Uh, Nancy reviewed it and also, uh, Jim Childers re- reviewed it, it was all a very positive comment. In the discussion I had with the editor, we came up with a proposal that we. Uh, start a column every, every second week, signed by Mike, that basically. Brings the public up to date about what's going on in the hospital. This would be a very positive item that would be very beneficial, uh, for bringing patients back into the hospital. And, um, I resent very much the fact that you think that I am not capable of providing information to the public, which I think is beneficial for the hospital.
Well, James, I think that we have a board and that we have a president of the of the board that. You know, sort of essentially speaks for all of us and if each of us goes and just, you know, heads off in our own direction and makes plans for. Us to participate in something that we know nothing about, I think that really reflects poorly on our own communication.
Okay, and then I think that, uh, I think that, uh, James did a good job on this, this part he was just mentioning where the editor agreed that. Something like breaking news from where we have to or update or with the.
But I mean, isn't that something that should come from Connor and with Connor working with the newspaper? Rather than for us to sort of mandate that that's something that we're going to be doing and I think that's what disturbs me is that. It seems as though, uh, you know, sort of a normal process has been circumvented here. And, uh, I mean, even even talking to the publisher, that's not our role as board members.
Uh, the editor, the editor expressed a lot of hostility about the fact, and he does work with Connor. Uh, they don't pay a lot of attention to what Connor does, uh, but he does provide positive input. But the editor was very upset about the fact that the board had pretty much ignored the newspaper and had refused to communicate with them.
It's not our job.
Uh, it's my job to represent people in my district, um, and that is what I'm doing and I will not be held back. From providing what I think is a good, uh, good benefit to to the hospital.
It's really the CEO and administration here and that sometimes, you know, they come back and ask questions of the board, but we have a president of the board. Who should be speaking on our behalf and that of the administration, so we have.
Then why, then why haven't you done it in the past? Uh, this was vetted through the CEO. Uh, this was a very positive letter, uh, it's going to come out in Sunday's paper. And I think that we are remiss by the fact that we have totally neglected our responsibility to provide the public with information.
Normally he puts Jesse in charge of it and she just proven to us that, you know, we can't trust her because. She'll write one positive article and then next thing you know, she twists it around and writes ten negatives, she just has a track record. Of always, you know, negativity sells papers, there's more concern about selling papers than the hospital, so. It's just come back to bias so many times that when you do reach out and ask to the paper, uh, it does not go well.
That is, that is why, that is why the CEO is going to be writing a column every couple of weeks. Providing what's going on at the hospital and providing positive information, because that's what's been lacking in the public.
Yeah, but that's, we do agree on the fact that that was the CEO and Connor job.
Right.
And not individually.
We do have, I don't interrupt the session, but we do have, um, our insurance company, the health council.
So we're going to go into a second session for that, correct?
To discuss potential current litigation, yeah, and be in for about, uh, forty five minutes an hour.
Okay, so why don't we dismiss everybody else?
Hey, James, I sent you, I forwarded an invitation for a Microsoft Teams meeting, did you get it?
Do you want to take a five minute break real quick?